Hi.
So we'll go ahead and formally open our public hearing here in Tuilla. Welcome those of you who are joining us today. And I'm just going to briefly review the process. We have at least one person who hasn't heard the spiel on how this process works. So in 2018, the voters approved Proposition 4 and to create the independent redistricting commission. In 2020, there is a legislative compromise that refined the proposition, which resulted in the ultimate creation of the statute that governs the commission today. We're a seven-member commission. Today, we have four of us here in person. And right now, we have two of our commissioners online. We have Commissioner Bishop online and Commissioner Thorne online. And so the members of the commission were appointed. Three of the members were appointed by Republican leadership in legislature. Three were appointed by Democratic leadership in the legislature. And then I was appointed by the governor and his chair. Our charge is to produce maps for Congress, the State House, the State Senate, and the State School Board that meet the criteria that we have been given in the statute. We started the process after we were appointed in February and spent several months learning about redistricting and understanding the process and waiting for the data. So the data normally comes in April. We didn't get it until August. And so we started drawing our maps in late August and have been drawing them since that time. And every map that we draw, we've been posting it on our website to make it available to the public. And so anybody that wants to see any of our maps, they're welcome to go to our website, uiirc.utah.gov, and see our maps there. As we further refine the maps, we eventually have to present a total of 12 maps to the legislature. That'll be three of the congressional maps, three of the state senate maps, three of the state house maps, and three of the state school board maps. We'll present those to the legislature. We'll deliver them before November 1st, I think is now the way that we phrase that. And the legislature will then consider our maps and make the ultimate decision on which maps they will ultimately approve. Now, we have several criteria that guide and govern our process. The first of those, and probably the preeminent of the criteria, is equal population. So the courts have ruled that each district has to have essentially equal population. And for the Congress, for congressional districts, that means there has to be 817,904 people. And there can be some deviation historically in the last several redistricting cycles. The legislature has had those variations down to very small numbers like 1. And but this year, the state legislative redistricting committee adopted a standard that said it had to be plus or minus 817 is the acceptable level of deviation. And so somewhere between 0 and 817 is the range that we have to deal with in drawing these boundaries. For the State Senate, the target population is 112,814. And with the State Senate, the State House, and the State School Board, the deviation levels are larger than they are for Congress that are acceptable. So in the State Senate, that gives us the possibility of having a range of up to 5,640 over and 5,640 below. For the State House, which has a target of 43,622, there's a maximum deviation of just over 2,000. On the State School Board, which has a target population of 218,108, there is a maximum deviation of 10,905. And so that notion of equal population is probably the first criteria that most people think about when they think about redistricting. It's the first one listed in the statute. But we have an additional set of criteria that we have to consider. Those include contiguity, that each part of a district must be touching another part of the district. And so we can't have a district that's separated by some other area in between. They have to be connected. Compactness, so the districts shall... The guiding language that we had is that the district shall avoid odd shapes or contortions that cannot be explained by other legitimate redistricting criteria. And the thing that probably the most common thing for odd shapes is municipal boundaries as we have looked at these, the maps that we've drawn. But we're trying to have these districts be as reasonably compact as we can. The next criteria is communities of interest. Communities of interest are groups that share a common policy interest. Now, that could be cultural, it could be religious, it could be social, it could be economic. So there are a whole range of possibilities that may bring people together. And so one of the things that we've been doing is we've been reaching out across the state trying to encourage people to give us information about their communities of interest. And we've gotten over 1,000 submissions of different communities of interest. We've got those on our website. They're available for people to see. But we also have them so that we can bring them into our mapping software. And we can then look and see where people have defined communities across the state. The other criteria that we have include geographic boundaries. Where possible, we should use things like rivers and lakes and highways as natural boundaries. For example, when we were in Provo last night, they talked about I-15 in Provo being a... I think they almost called it a mountain range between parts of the city. They're kind of naturally divided the city. And so using the freeway there would be an example of using geographic boundaries to help define our districts. We've also been given the criteria of looking at cores of prior districts. And the... Enough, that's it. So we've also been charged with trying to keep municipalities and counties together so that we don't put them in different districts where that's possible. And that's not always possible. So for example, in the House, we have a population greater than a House district in Tuilla County. So we can't put all of Tuilla County in one district. Now, we might be able to put all of Tuilla City in a district, but we'd have to split the county. And we're trying not to do that as much as possible. We've then been encouraged to look at boundary agreement across the types of maps. And finally, in some ways, one of the things that I think many people identify most closely with the commission is that we will not favor or disfavor an incumbent, a candidate, a potential candidate, or a political party. So when we're doing our map drawing, we're not taking into account the political data that would tell us where the incumbents live, who voted for whom, so that we don't have any political data influencing our map-making decisions. And that gives you kind of a broad sense of the criteria that we have. What we've done is we've divided the commission into three map-drawing teams. And so each of those teams has been charged with drawing maps, congressional maps, state senate maps, state house maps, and state school board maps. And we'll then be bringing those maps all together to choose which one of those we want to push forward. Additionally, we've had the public drawing maps. And we're looking at those maps as well to see if there are public maps that we like better than our maps. And if we do, then we'll be happy to put those forward as a map from the commission. Is there anything that I've missed from members of the commission? Okay, not hearing anything. At this point, on the agenda, we have a presentation by Soraya on how the public can be engaged with us. So Soraya?
Okay.
You might come right over closer to the owl.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. So Joey is going to pull it up. Can't see it on this screen though.
So is the public screen not showing?
Should I change it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm hoping that we're all familiar with the website, that we don't need to walk through.
I hope you can see that. And we have flyers that have our website on it. And so you'll be able to find all of this. And if you need any help accessing anything, you can email us, reach out to us. We're always happy to answer any questions or concerns. So one of the coolest ways and probably most important ways you can help us is by commenting on the maps that have been drafted. So if you go to our site, uiirc.utah.gov, when you scroll down a little bit, you see these different types of maps. And you click on one of them, like congressional maps. And you'll be able to see the current maps that the commissioners have been working on and drafting. And this tool allows you to zoom in as close as you'd like. And you can see where your town is, where your house is, and look at the borders and of each district and let us know if it's well drawn, if it could be done differently, or if you really like it, and why you like it. The more detailed, the better. So you'll be able to click through on the tabs on the top to see the different types of maps. And in that black box on the left, you'll be able to give us some information, you know, which map were you commenting on? Why you like it? How strong you agree with this, things like that. So that's probably the easiest way to get involved and to help. Other ways that you can help, you'll also find it on our website. If you go back to the website. And you go to participate. But you'll be able to draw communities of interest. And there's a video that shows you how to do it. And you'll just be able to draw an area around your neighborhood, your community, communities that are interesting to you, and just let us know why that's important. Other ways you can help us, you can send comments to us through our email. You can fill out this form below. Just anything you have to tell us is helpful, and we appreciate it. And you know your area very well. And yeah, but again, just reach out if you need anything. Always happy to help. Any questions?
Thank you, Soraya. At this point, we'll ask our executive director, Gordon Hake, to tell us a little bit about the process that we'll use for public comments.
Okay, and I also wanted to let you know that the mayor will send us a PowerPoint.
Oh, fantastic.
So... So we're glad to have those are here. And afterward, we're willing to take some time and show you the software, the webpage. And anybody that'd like to come up and question, you can. I don't know if you want to see the PowerPoint first or have...
I think seeing the PowerPoint first would be terrific.
Okay.
Want to make sure that the public can also see it.
It was really interesting PowerPoint, so. And yeah, Grantsville's the first one. This is the Grantsville one. The public can't see this. Oh, they got over here. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So what they want to do is talk a little bit about uniqueness of Tuilla and kind of the reason why it should be together. And then they're going to also suggest where it should be connected to. So go ahead, next slide. So both are going to show the same slide, Danger Cave. I didn't know this was the oldest occupied site. Go ahead and just click through each of these items. Not that fast, but anyway. This commission can read that. No, it was... So if you live in Tuilla, this is kind of clever. It's really fast to even read these things. Go ahead and go to the next one. Next slide. Hey, go ahead and these are geographic features. Look back. I thought that was interesting, the most cinematic location. Go to the next one.
That's one acres.
Yes, the second-largest county in the state. Seventh-most populated. And this is, I think, the commission can appreciate this, seeing the numbers, because that's what they're looking at all day.
Do we know why Edda has parentheses around it? I don't know. I mean, who am I asking?
My guess is it's a place, not a formal city, but I don't know that for sure.
Is Stansbury Park included in Tuilla? This is a separate entity. I don't see Stansbury Park.
It is part of the county, so it's not formally municipal.
It's not a formal city?
It's not municipal, see, it's part of the county.
But Edda produces great jerky.
Okay.
They didn't put that on the earlier slide, they should have.
Okay, yeah, there's Stansbury Park there, okay.
So those are the county subdivisions. It's interesting how much land is federal or state. Or actually federal.
Not much left over.
This one you have applied up of Edda.
Stockton they had in the slide before was part of one of the cities, I think. We can go back.
Yeah, why don't you go back a couple, Joey? One more.
Well, go forward again. At Stockton, they have in here as part of the cities. So I think those are municipalities. And maybe Edda is a pseudo-municipality, I suspect. It's a municipality, sorry, but the county probably takes care of it or something.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's what we learned from some of the other counties went to is that they were created according to Lyle due to water issues. But Tuilla was an original county at statehood. So just so you... We're clear on that, wasn't water issue.
That's why they have a phone block. This water's going to mishap here.
Okay.
Nobody can pronounce this name.
Is that the last slide, Joey?
I can't read that, I'm sorry.
So District 21 is... They're suggesting keep it roughly what it is. And then District 68, simplify it by removing Beaver County and make some tweaks to Utah County. They suggest adding Beaver to District 73.
That was interesting, because when we were at... Utah County this morning, they were saying they would prefer us, instead of moving it out to Tuilla, move it more towards...
Yeah, Lehigh and Saratoga Springs.
Anyway, I'm just saying that's interesting to hear them.
We get different perspectives everywhere we go. I can't read the bottom, Joey, can you?
So it says that... It says the 2010 redistricting realigned Tuilla County into two senate districts, with either district giving Tuilla County a majority of its seats.
Thank you.
Okay, then we had another presentation from Tuilla City as well. So it's good when they're united and they both send in the same. What's that?
They said there's nothing in this slide.
Did you got a second? I appreciate your work and attention too. One mile to see that. Do you want me to try to send it to you again?
So can you see words on yours?
I can.
Okay.
So let me tell you what it shows. So it went through a number of the things that we saw with the... With the county in terms of some of the historical features that you saw and the unique geographic elements. They talk about again being the second-largest and the second-largest county by area, and then the seventh by population. They go through each of the cities again. But then they have a map showing where the properties are located that the BLM owns, the department of...
Oh, we can see that part.
Okay. I ran you pretty quickly through the others, because you'd seen those words before. So this gives you an idea of where all the land is and where the private property is. Again, talks about the... The next slide was the major employees. Okay, you're starting to see the words. Transportation corridors. This shows the historical origins of Tuilla and the different counties. It's a pretty good size.
That was a big county.
We're the three, or the two house districts now. I know Representative Merrill Nelson, I think, lives in Grantsville. He's one of the legislators. Can't think of the other member of the House. They have two districts.
Okay, this one... So go down to the slide, and they'll show what they want the map to kind of look like.
We're not...
No, it's coming.
Oh, it's coming still?
Yep, just keep going. These are similar comments to make it fair. Disregard the politics. Okay, now this is the proposal.
The Senator of the House. Senate.
Okay. It shows a little bit in Utah County. Porchton in Salt Lake.
What's the house number? 73?
68.
It was 2168.
So 68 is Merrill Nelson.
Okay.
In the senate, yeah.
You need about 112,000. Yeah, and I think Tuilla was like 50,000. So they have to combine. But that's the way they're showing they'd like to be.
What's the population of Tuilla County? Forty-nine?
It was 49,000, I think.
The county?
The whole county.
See, that wouldn't even be applesauce, true.
Right, so they're showing to pull some of the... Some of it from Utah County, some from Salt Lake. Instead of going down to Beaver. Now, that's... I think that's helpful, for you to get an idea of what they think.
Yeah.
That's a really good...
This map is from the city council?
This is from the city. The first one was the county, this is city.
Such a... Just a question, I saw that the title of this was Legislative Redistricting. So I did... Did they make a presentation to the legislative committee?
In Grantsville. Yeah, that's my understanding.
So this is probably what they saw there.
And really quick, just a quick correction. The population we have for the 2020 census in Tuilla is 72,988 people.
Oh, thank you. I just read that.
What was the population in 2015? You should have that sheet we have in every place.
I'll give that to you in just a second.
Or Gordon may get it first if he finds a sheet up in the hallway.
The population in 2010 is 58,501. So about 20,000.
So it said 58,000 in 2015, 72 in the 2020 census.
That's a good map. Let me just show you the problem. And they're pretty sensitive to Tuilla, because I think they need to be protected. I don't think they have that. But if you look north, that blue, that's Box Elder County. You look across, you go Box Elder, Cache, Rich County. Those three counties do not have enough for two full census. And so you have to take into some other area south of those counties so they have a full senate district. And what they did is they took Tuilla County, south of Tuilla, Grantsville, that area, and put it in the Box Elder district. Now, what they could have done is, instead of that, they could have gone into Weber County. And part of the concern is that Weber and Box Elder County are not very much alike. Whereas Tuilla, and that's changing, but Tuilla and the farming things of Box Elder County are probably more alike. The other option they had, when I was first elected as a senator, I had Cache, Parta Cache, Olive Ridge, and I had most of Summit County. I didn't have Park City, but I have Coville and Camas and all that area. And I always said, that's really fun. I have to drive out of state Wyoming, or I have to drive through three other senate districts to get to my senate district, because... But they were connected. And it was moved that way because there was a reapportionment. And what they had done is they'd given the avenues in Salt Lake into Davis County. As we looked at it, I said, that's not very smart. We shouldn't do that. And so what we did instead is we took the Summit County in my area and gave it to the legislator in South Ogden. So you tied those and Morgan into South Ogden. And it was enough around that then the Salt Lake line was the boundary. So the senate districts were divided by that. Instead of mine, because I lost population, that's when they went into Box Elder County. Now, the house seat does not go into Tuilla County. A house seat goes into... A house seat goes into Weber County. And the last election, the Weber County delegate won that seat. So they divided Brigham City. So Brigham City south is in that, Brigham City north is in the other. And I know, as I've talked to those people, they're concerned that Brigham City, that size, can't elect a legislator. So that's part of, the other issue you have with it is that they took the north or the east part of Twilla County and went around the mountain and came into Magna. And when I was first elected in the senate, we had a really good senator from Twilla County, and that was Senator Swan. I mean, very effective, good senator, I think, school teacher out here, Democrat, and was very effective in lots of legislature. And then when they changed it, Brent Goodfellow won that seat, and he lived in, near the Magna area. I think it's now carried by Donald Black. Who just recently got married, Senator, anyway, he lives in Magna as well. And then what they had to do to balance it out, they took the southwest part of Twilla County and put it into the Utah County. So it really meant that anyone from Twilla City at the time to win had to really carry all of Twilla and a good share of Magna, which was pretty hard to do. Because I don't think Twilla is a solidly Republican or solidly Democratic area. Historically, it was Democratic because of the labor union people who worked in like West Valley of Salt Lake, a solid Democrat, because the union employees worked at Kennecott. And it's kind of that historical area in there. But as I look at it now, that's really the question, what do you do now? Like I say, it's like the balloon you push in, it pops out. And Twilla really can't go west. To go north, they have to go really a long distance over the Great Salt Lake and all that area. There's not much due north of Twilla County. And to go south, they have to probably go into Utah County. And you heard today the people from Fairfield saying, don't put us in that, we want to stay in Utah County. So, but if, if, for example, the whole county of Twilla is 75? Is 75?
72.
72, yeah. See, they lack 50,000 of padding, so it would be 50,000 we have to take, so then.
We've got 50,000 someplace else.
If they get out of Magna, you're going to hear from them, you know, you've deprived us a right of getting a senator, because you've divided us up some of the ones. I wish we did not have the requirement of having equal population, because I think you look at, there's some things you divide a little bit differently, but again, and there've been some great house members from Twilla County. I just understood Beverly White just passed away, and I still, what a great person she was. Again, a Democrat that we all dealt with, and very, very, very good. And now Representative Yowen, is he still a representative from here? And I know Merrill Nelson are two that I've worked with over the years, that I've got a great, I respect. So Twilla's been, well, the argument really is, we don't have anybody living here in Twilla. But I know Pete Knudsen, when I sat next to him, he was in Brigham, and he had everything west of Twilla. And I know he fought to get funding for the Wendover Airport, airport there. I know he was going to Twilla and Twilla County all the time to meet with the people there. Maybe they feel like he did a pretty good job, and then we really tried hard. And so that's just kind of the balloon thing. And maybe it's time to say, now, Twilla, you paid your price. Maybe we ought to try to get him a senator, but, but you don't do it without having ramifications in other areas. And maybe we do half in, half in Salt Lake and half in Utah County. But when you look at around that bend, and in Utah County, around the lake, you go into Santaquin, Pessin, those areas that are really growing too very rapidly. And whether we deprive them with having a state center or not, you've got a very good one right now, Mike.
Mike McCall.
So I don't know where they live in there, except I know he was at Sportham.
Thank you. Karen, did you have any other comments? Joey, can we go to the next slide?
And we're just thanking us after that.
Who's just what?
Just saying thank you.
Oh, just thank you, okay.
But anyway, I think.
That's always good to hear.
Yeah. No, and I think, I think that will give you some idea, I think you kind of were aware of that already. But now you can be completely aware.
Thank you.
Thank you, boy.
We'd like to invite any of the public that's here that would like to address the commission. We'd be delighted to hear from you. You just come up to the microphone and share your name and share your comments.
And last I checked, I represent this up north. So I'd like to be part of Twilla County somehow. That's why I kind of tend to hope that you do. Twilla County, so the whole somehow.
So where, again, what's that, that you're from?
Up in Stockton.
Oh, Stockton, okay, okay.
Sorry.
No, you're fine, yeah.
But I just was kind of hoping that somehow this commission is independent, that we can keep Twilla County as a, maybe the joint as a whole somehow. I don't know how, what, but I wish somebody could.
Thank you. Let me just raise this issue. Obviously, Stockton, if it's north, there's a senate seat. I would assume that Stockton is in a house seat, and I don't know who the house representative would be in that seat. But again, one of the issues you take, even if we made Twilla part of a senate district with 72,000 people, there'd be 50,000 people someplace else. And you could always get somebody in, say, Magna, who could run with enough support in Twilla County to win. So you may still have a senator not living in Twilla County. And so.
But we could, you know, look at, making sure that we try and keep Twilla together. Please.
That would work, because Magna's close enough to meet the eye of the one representative that's in, like, around some border. North's log and a leaf.
The senator, your area currently is Senator Sandel. And he lives in Tremont. It was Senator Knudsen before that, he lived in Brigham.
Yes.
But all of Box Elder County was in one district, and then took part of Twilla County. But I'm not sure who your house representative is. I say that Merrill Nelson lives in, I'm pretty sure he lives in Grantsville. And I know he's a pretty effective legislator.
I don't think he's Stockton.
I don't, I don't, I lied.
Thank you.
Please get your input.
We'd invite anybody else that would like to share their perspective. We don't have any comments online, okay? Not hearing any, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of our meeting. Do any of the commissioners have any other issues that they'd like to discuss? Hearing none. We have a motion to adjourn. The meeting is hereby adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for those of you who are here that would like to see the software, we'd be happy to show you that, and to, you know, showing some of the maps that we've drawn, you know, for.
I'd like to record too, I appreciate this slide.
Yeah, that, I learned things about Twilla County, I know.